Good evening. It is Monday, November 29th at 7:01 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Lansing City Council to order. And before we get into business, I would remind guests, visitors, city staff, and council members that face coverings are required at City Hall and all city council meetings due to the ongoing pandemic related to COVID-19. Please ensure that your face covering covers your nose and your mouth for ultimate protection. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are six members present at Quorum. Councilmembers Dunbar and Spitzley are absent.
Thank you. Is there anybody that the council, or clerk, or mayor wish us to keep in our thoughts as we pause for a moment of reflection? Councilmember Wood?
Thank you. On November 20th, Dale Benjamin passed away. Many of you might know Dale from his work in the community. Dale was president of the Ed Moore Neighborhood Association. He was also a watch coordinator. He worked diligently with Rena Risper and with Dale Schroeder in the Walnut neighborhood on issues that they had. Dale and his mother started a nonprofit pets supplies that allowed people that were indigent and had difficulty economically to have supplies for their pets so that they could still have that companionship. He was also known for the work that he did with LPD. Jack Stauffered and Vivian Stauffered from the East Side neighborhood started a holiday dinner for police officers and first responders. And as they got older, Dale and his mother took that up. For a number of years, Dale would work with the community to make sure that first responders that were away from their families on Thanksgiving and Christmas and Easter had a hot meal and let them know that they were appreciated. Dale's mother, who is in her 90s, one of the things that was concerning for him was he wanted to make sure that he had one more chance to talk to her and to see her when he was in Sparrow. He will be deeply missed by the community, by those of us here on council, as well as his family in the public safety arena. And so if we could remember he and his family at this time, I would appreciate it. Also, Kelly Rossmann McKinney, who we had mentioned at the last council meeting, had passed away. Her memorial service or visitation with her family is on December 2nd at Tiffany's Funeral Home on West Saginaw, and it's an opportunity to reach out and see her family at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like the council members and the public to know and remember Donald Rakowski, who is the father of Brad Rakowski, owner of Bradley's, along with the father-in-law of our city clerk, Chris Swope. He passed on Thanksgiving of cancer. And I certainly have passed on my regards and will send a note to the family and let them know that I'm thinking of them and that the city of Lansing is thinking of them, as these two wonderful gentlemen of our community are hurting and their family is hurting. But Chris, just wanted you and your husband to know that we're thinking about you, we're with you, and we're thinking of your whole family.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if the council would join me in a moment of meditation to reflect the Benjamin family, Kelly Rossmann McKinney family, and the Rakowski and Swope families, I'd appreciate that. Mr. Vice President?
Sure, I'd move the council proceedings as presented.
It's a proper motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And we are to special ceremonies and presentations.
Yes, we are going to jump to item 14, the appointment of Elaine Laws Barker as an at-large member of the Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority, Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors for a term to expire February 28th, 2027. And I will turn it over to Councilmember Garza for that introduction.
Thank you, Council President. So the mayor has made the appointment of Dr. Elaine Laws Barker as an at-large member of the Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors for a term to expire February 28th of 2027. The Committee of Development and Planning met on November 16th, and we took affirmative action. Dr. Elaine Laws Barker was there in attendance. And, you know, she's been in the community for about 30 years now in Lansing, and two things really stuck out, you know, about our meeting we had. You know, she said she has a desire to ensure that the Lansing continues to grow the needs of our BIPOC community and they remain heard, and to ensure that all areas, not just the downtown area, will benefit from the projects that we engage in. So I appreciate that. You know, I'm a ward representative in South Lansing, and all too often it seems like, you know, the downtown gets more of the attention than 60% of, you know, where the residents reside. So I appreciate your willingness to serve, and thank you. And I look forward to moving this resolution.
Very good. I hear a motion?
Motion, please.
Very good. It's a proper motion. Dr. Laws Barker will dispense with the resolution, and when you do, we'll have you come down and get sworn in. And if there's anyone with you that you'd like to be in the picture, or while you're taking the oath, please feel free to bring them with you. But otherwise, I see no further discussion. So all those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. If you want to join us down here, we'll get the oath administered. Congratulations, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
We are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Any comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as kind of a public service announcement regarding COVID-19, especially since Michigan is the pretty much hottest, highest transmission spot in the country, I realized that Rite Aid is offering free everyday walk-in anytime between 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock booster shots, because I was trying to hassle around on the internet to schedule my booster shot and realized that right in, any one of them has walk-ins. So I took advantage of that two days ago, feeling fine. And anybody that wants a booster, I encourage you to do it, and you should do it too by walking in very conveniently at your local Rite Aid.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Any other comments? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, President Spatafor. I do not have any announcements, so I will proceed to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience who has a community event you would like to announce, please step forward to the mic there, and we will give you one minute to announce your event. And seeing none, we're to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters does include items on the agenda numbers 2 through 19. Although I'm informed that item 12 will not be considered tonight, the executive management group benefits plan, but it's still eligible to be discussed under public comment. So we'll give you about one more minute to complete the blue sign-in form if you wish to address any items on the agenda numbers 2 through 19. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few quick announcements. First, we did a fall color show through our Neighborhoods Department, and that is now on our YouTube page, so I hope people will check it out, the beautiful Lansing fall colors. We had a very successful community connect where we provided a variety of resources to our community, and that was a lot of fun, a lot of great vendors there. We did a coat drive, which I announced here, and we had over 300 coats donated that have been given out to those of need. We had a very successful mobile food bank, so I appreciate all those who worked hard on that. Certainly, we had a very successful Silverbells. I hope everyone had a chance to enjoy that. 50,000 people in our city enjoying themselves outside. The weather wasn't too bad, and the drone show was incredible. If you didn't see it, they've got it online. But I hope everyone enjoyed Silverbells. I did run in the 5K the next day poorly, but I did it, and it was cold. We have a few things coming up. We have, December 1st, we have our first participatory budget meeting from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at Foster Room 213. Masks required. It will be socially distanced, but this is the first step in our participatory budget process. On December 15th, we'll be having a public listening session for folks who are interested in the American Rescue Plan Act funding that we have remaining for the next two years. We've had a lot of people who have expressed interest in those dollars, so those who are interested should come and present information on that, so we can see what our community has in mind for some of these very limited dollars. And then we'll be adding that to our proposal to council for budget in March. November 30th, from noon to 2:00 and 5:00 to 7:00 PM, MDOT is having an open house on the recently completed traffic noise analysis and updates on the upcoming rebuilding of I-496 from Lansing Road to Grand River. That's at the Michigan Chamber of Commerce office, 600 South Walnut Street. And that work is scheduled to begin in 2022. And then finally, the selection committee for our next chief of police recommended two finalists to move forward in the process. Ellery Soesby, captain and interim chief here in Lansing, and Jason Matson, captain and Bakersfield Police Department in California. There was a forum on November 23rd at 6:00 PM with questions for both of them submitted from the public. It was about an hour and a half. You can see it on the city's YouTube page or our Facebook page. And I'll be meeting with them and interviewing them myself to see what other questions to ask and things that are on my mind. And then I will be making a recommendation to the police board of commissioners shortly after that. So we are coming to a close on this process, and hopefully we will have a new police chief in very soon, by the end of the year. That's what I've got, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and it appears that we have no one who has completed a blue form to speak on legislative matters. So we are to ordinances for passage. And let me bring up that language.
Not used to us not having anyone.
Everyone's still sleeping off the turkey.
Yeah. Okay. We have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to repeal and replace the existing zoning ordinance and map being part 12 Title VI of the Lansing Codified Ordinances in its entirety except for Chapter 1300 Marijuana Operations. With a Form-Based Code and Zoning Map, the ordinance is read a second time by its title. It was reported from the Committee of the Whole and is on the order of immediate passage.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So what this is, it actually pertains to amendments to the Form-Based Code that we passed back in March. And so we actually had Economic Development and Planning come in, I believe it was early October. They discussed the amendments, the need for the amendments, as well as some changes to the maps. This is actually the last stage of the process. So the planning board did actually take a look at this in June of this year. They approved it unanimously. After our introduction, we had a public hearing earlier this month, November 8th. I don't recall anybody coming and making comment one way or the other. We also have not received any written correspondence. So with that being said, I would move a passage of the ordinance to amend Part 12 Title VI Form-Based Zoning Code.
Okay, that is a proper motion to adopt the ordinance that is before us. And I'm going to say a few more words whilst I wait for the clerk and ask for any discussion. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
On adoption of the ordinance, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted.
Mr. Vice President, would you like immediate effect?
I would.
I don't think that's...
Sorry. Never mind.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
Is there any items on the agenda besides item 12 that members wish to pull from the consent agenda? All right. Councilmember Wood?
I do believe for the record that we do need to pull item 3, so it can be read into the record, because it is to make safe and demolish with state, under the state statute.
Okay. Item 3 will be pulled. Any further? Seeing none. Mr. Vice President?
Okay, so that still leaves us with a lengthy consent agenda, so bear with me just for a minute. So the consent agenda tonight will include a grant acceptance pertaining to sobriety court grant, grant acceptance from MISTDA, and this is the annual renewal that we take a look at each year. Also, grant acceptance, sorry, this is Michigan State Housing Voucher Services Program. We also have grant acceptance Lansing Police Department Burn Justice Assistance Grant on behalf of Mikey 23 Foundation. We have another grant acceptance. This is Human Relations and Community Services Emergency Housing Services pertaining to COVID relief. There's another grant acceptance. This is from the Office of Highway Safety Planning Grant. We have another grant acceptance. This pertains to Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, dealing with small businesses, and a boost to small businesses. We have a policy amending city council, or what we do with our city council meeting recordings. And we have a claim appeal number 1869 Gerald D. Phillips Revocable Trust for $5,523 and trash violation fees at 1917 Osborne Avenue. And with that said, I would move the consent agenda.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Then we are back to item number 3, the show cause, setting the show cause hearing.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So we have before us is Lansing Code Compliance Officer declared the property at 2206 West Jolly Road legally described, Lot 116 Eco Farms, to be unsafe and a dangerous building, and requested the property owner to be ordered to demolish, otherwise make safe or demolish the structure. It's a fire hazard property, fire damage property. I don't have the, oh, there's the pictures, okay. On September 23rd, 2021, Lansing Demolition Board held a meeting to consider to make recommendations on whether to declare the structure a dangerous building. Code Compliance Office have determined it to be unsafe. And let's see, we met at, so I guess the show cause hearing is set for Monday, December 13th at 7:00 PM here at the Lansing City Chambers. And with that, I would move the resolution. And let me make this, there has not been any contact from the owner, no permits have been pulled on this as well. And with that, I'd move the resolution.
That is a proper motion. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Vice President?
I think the only thing I would add is before our process as a legislative body, there was quite a bit of work done to try to work with this particular property owner. And there was actually, it was already kind of in the process, and then a fire occurred after this was actually already put in the make safe and demolish process. So we have kind of a long history in terms of trying to right the ship here, and I'm glad to see it at this state.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we are to item 15, Tom Hoysington to the Elected Officers Compensation Commission.
Mr. Vice President?
Sure. So we had Mr. Hoysington in earlier with us before the Committee of the Whole. It was a good interview. He talked about moving to Lansing back in 2001. He does currently live in the 4th Ward. He is retired. He is the past president and CEO of Public Affairs Associates. He talked a little bit about his time in the 70s and 80s as part of the England County Board of Commissioners. He also served actually on this commission back in the 90s. And then he was actually, and they didn't discuss this, I don't think, tonight, but he was actually a Fire Board Commissioner from 2013 to 2017. So a long history of service in our area. In his application, he did select the EOCC as one of his choices that was discussed tonight. And he really discussed the need tonight to compensate elected officials for their work being done. And I think he used the word sacrifice, you know, when discussing public service of kind of this variety. So in any event, I would move the appointment with the understanding that we had a conversation pertaining to the effective date. He is married to an outgoing judge, and so we're going to make the, so that it doesn't conflict with our own charter and our own rules, we're going to make the effective date 1/16/2022. With that being said, I would move the appointment.
Thank you. That is a proper motion on the amended resolution that came from Cow. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
And we have next, item 16, Steve Young to the same commission.
Mr. Vice President?
Sure. And we had Steve Young before Committee of the Whole tonight as well. He talked a little bit about his history in the area, which is longstanding history, moved to Lansing in 1973. He also currently lives in the 4th Ward. Although he attended Northern Michigan University for a short period of time, he's actually a Michigan State graduate, but he is serving, which we love, right, but he is serving as a trustee on the Northern Michigan University Board of Trustees. He's been on that board since 2018. He currently serves as the vice chair. Much like Mr. Hoysington, he expressed a desire to give back to the Lansing community through service, and believes now that he is retired, he is in a position both professionally and personally to do so. So I would move the appointment of Mr. Steve Young as an at-large member of the Elected Officers Compensation Commission, and that would be for a term to expire October 1st, 2023.
That is a proper motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to item 17, opposing secure my vote petition.
President Spatafor, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Vice President, I will move the resolution opposing the Secure Michigan Vote Petition and any other efforts aimed at restricting voter access and voter rights. It's a lengthy resolution inspired by one done by our peers in Ann Arbor urging residents to decline to sign the Secure Michigan Vote Petition, understanding its role in the referendum process could result in a legislative enactment rather than a ballot proposal, goes to the voters. And I did consult with the clerk on this. This actually came from the clerk's office, so I'm going to turn it over to our clerk, if you would allow, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President and President Spatafor for introducing this. This proposal, it would hurt Lansing voters, would hurt voters in Michigan. I oppose it. And one of the things that it would do, it has a very strong ban on any in-kind contributions for voter registration or election operations at all. My office works hand in hand with the League of Women Voters, as well as other nonpartisan organizations to try and get people in Lansing registered to vote. And we think this part would particularly impact younger voters. Another provision of this proposed state law would require people to put personal identifiable information on their absentee ballot applications that are sent through the mail, which I believe poses an unnecessary risk of identity theft. And as President Spatafor noted, it is important to note that under fairly unique nationally provision of our state constitution, if they collect the 300 and some thousand signatures, the legislature can enact this without it going to a vote of the people and without our governor having the ability to veto it. So it kind of does an end run around our legislative process through a minority of the voters of Michigan. So I strongly encourage folks not to sign this, and I appreciate your consideration of the resolution.
President Spatafor.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Clerk. I knew you'd know better at explaining this than I would, but when you came to, when we talked about this, knowing how much you've done to improve voter access in our community, if you're seeing this as a threat to that, I certainly was happy to put this forward. So I would move that resolution, Mr. Vice President.
Sure. There is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes.
Okay, we are to item 18, the amendment to Council Rule 20...
Mr. Vice President?
Sure. So this amendment pertains to Rule Number 20. That is under adoption of ordinances specifically the manner of introduction in the form of the ordinance. What we are doing is changing language in lines 1 through 4. And when amending an existing ordinance, ordinances, sorry, amendments that deal with changes or new matter will no longer be in capital lettering, but rather it will be bolded. This also specifies that any unchanged ordinance language shall be in regular type. President Spatafor did discuss kind of the genesis of this earlier, and the fact that this, the way that we have presented these in the past has been, or presented some difficulty for folks that have visual impairments. And so with that being said, I would move, actually, I'm not moving anything, because Council Rule Number 41 requires that, sorry, that we actually receive review, and that we can't take this up for consideration until at least right this next meeting. So we'll act on this December 13th, correct?
I believe the rules say it has to be moved, but the motion can't be voted on until the following meeting.
Okay, so we do need to move. Okay. So I would move the amended council rule.
There is a motion about which we will do nothing. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, we are to... We are to ordinances for introduction. The Committee of the Whole introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan re-adopting the codified ordinances of the city of Lansing. The ordinance is read a first time by title and referred to the Committee of the Whole.
Mr. Vice President?
Sorry. So what we're doing is we're actually setting a public hearing for December 13th. That would take place at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Just a little bit of background, our charter requires that we re-codify our ordinances every 10 years. Back in 2017, there was a snafu. That didn't happen. We decided at that time, actually, in 2018, that it would be best practice if this body... if this body actually re-codified on an annual basis. And so what we're looking to do is re-codify our ordinances. And again, the public hearing would be December 13th, 7:00 p.m. in council chambers. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Is it a proper motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That is the yellow form. If you wish to address the City Council, we'll give you about another minute to complete that form and turn it into my intern in the back. There he is, raising his hand. So Ross will collect that if you have one. And in the meantime, we're to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Mr. Vice President.
I would move that, items be read in, be considered as read in full and that the appropriate referrals be made by you, President Spatafor.
That is a proper motion. All those, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we have, from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Please sound file.
From the mayor. Short list.
He's on a different list right now, I can tell you.
Cell tower land lease.
Development planning.
Setting a show cause for 4108 Deer Field.
Public safety.
Grant acceptance for recycling quality improvement.
Ways and Means.
Grant acceptance DNR community forestry.
Ways and Means.
Two items relative to amending Chapter 1218 Soil Erosion and Sedimentation.
Development planning.
Two items related to Chapter 890 Poverty Exemption Guidelines.
Committee of the Whole.
Issuance of Sewage Disposal Revenue Bonds.
Commission, Committee of the Whole.
Two items relative to objecting to accepting tax-reverted properties from the two counties.
Development and planning.
Street name change of Technology Boulevard and Discovery Drive to Biotechnology Drive and Health Park Drive.
Committee on City Operations.
We have the vacation of School Craft Drive and part of North Washington Avenue.
Development and planning.
Grant acceptance Financial Empowerment Fund.
Ways and Means.
Two items relative to SLU 1 of 2021, 611 North Butler, for a surface parking lot.
Development and planning.
Two items relative to lawsuit settlements, participation in agreements for lawsuit settlements relative to the opioid litigation.
The Committee of the Whole.
Two items relative to an obsolete property rehabilitation act district for 224 South Washington Square.
The Committee on Development and Planning.
The establishment of a Red Cedar Development Project area.
Development and planning.
Redevelopment area liquor license for Hooked Community at 3124 East Michigan Avenue.
City Operations.
And a redevelopment area liquor license for Batter Up Bistro at 621 East Michigan Avenue.
City Operations.
We have exemption of the city charter provisions to extend multi-year contract for the open police and fire chief positions.
Committee of the Whole.
And communications and petitions, notice from the Liquor Control Commission about Q5 Distillery transferring the American Fifth operation at 112 North Larch Street.
Committee on City Operations.
Okay, we are to Martian of Excused Absence.
We have two members absent. Both have requested an excuse for this evening. Is there a motion to excuse them? It's been moved by the Vice President. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Anything final? All right. Folks, just note, next week, I'm sorry, our next meeting, we are pushing, I think, I think we're pushing it to 5 for COW. Let me double check, but I think we're going to do COW, and we will plan to have some refreshments for you because it's going to be a lengthy setup. So the 7 o'clock start time will be ambitious for City Council, but we are going to have 5 o'clock start time for the Committee of the Whole.
Remarks by the mayor.
Thank you. I just want to add, you all passed the resolution on opposing the so-called Secure My Vote petition. I would like to add my voice to yours, and thank you for unanimously passing that. Thank you, Clerk Swob for pushing that. Thank you, Councilman Spatafor. I put something on social media, but I know we had a member of the public who came and asked about this a meeting or two ago, so I'd like to add my voice to the council and the clerk here in Lansing opposing that ballot initiative as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are to public comment on city government-related matters. We have Diane Shorter, followed by Daniel Arnold.
Crosses. And we've been having our share of floods over there, sewer problems. The roads are really bad. I haven't seen so many bad roads, roads in that area in the whole city of Lansing. And we appreciate it. They also fix up the sidewalks. They're sticking up from the trees and things. I called the city. They said they put a work order on it. But I would like, people have known when they were students bicycling, it's treacherous. So if anything could be done about that, appreciate it. The sewer backs up in a lot of those streets. Roto ruto is out there a lot. I myself had a flooded basement and the shower, sewer stuff was coming out of it. And I couldn't afford a plumber, so I had some people snake it and help me out. But it does this a lot. And so I thought I'd let you know, speaking for the people in my neighborhood. And then, secondly, my house is red-tagged by Amy Castillo. She's been feuding with a guy that sold me the house. And she refuses to take the tag down. I pay house payments. I pay maintenance and repairs, and I also pay taxes. And she's trying to say she's not taking the red tag off because she wants him to pay landlord license fee, and they've been at it for about 10 years. I'm kind of in the middle of it, and I'm taking care of my home. And I would like somebody to talk to her. I talked to my attorney. She said, talk to the city attorney for her, and so that's going to be next. But she, what else? Oh, I paid, the house had pallets in the backyard. They said, they want me to, they said, clean it up. So we did. But we gave them 150 before that for cleanup, but we ended up doing it ourselves. So there's an extra 150 in one department to pay Amy for the red tag fee. But like, I'll try to straighten it out, like, there's three people that lived in that house, three different families that have been going through similar stuff. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Daniel Arnold.
Hello. It's been a little while. This is Daniel Arnold, Facebook guy smiling. Good to see all you guys, Mayor Shore, Brian Jackson, all, everyone here. I'm just really glad to see you, Carol Wood, everybody here, Peter Spatafor. I got to enjoy some great things in this city. The citizens' education opportunities have been phenomenal. The opportunity to do Citizens Academy as well as Citizens Police Academy. And it just got so personal and so real. Like, I've had mental health issues, and I had this opportunity to be in a scenario with Lansing Tactical where the Lansing Tactical guy had a knife to his neck. And I'm like, how am I going to talk him down? Me and an other lady got to have the experience to be like police officers and see just how hard it is to deal with that or domestic dispute. We also did virtual reality with a shooting scenario. Just really, really amazing opportunity to be here with you guys. And then Citizens Academy got me to get some CPR training with Chief David O'Um. That was just, it's just really, really great opportunities here in this city. On a daily basis, I get to, Monday through Friday, I go local, state, federal. I stop by LPD, City Hall, House, Senate, Federal Building, Governor's Office, Veterans Memorial Courthouse, and I just talk to these wonderful security and police, local, state, federal. It's just really, I'm really happy to be alive. I'm really happy to be in this city with you guys. It's just, you know, when I first came starting speaking at City Council, I was going through a major mental health struggle. And, you know, I just, I just kept checking in, and I feel like I've been really rude to you in the past, Mayor Shore, but like, you just held on. You're just like, I'm just going to be the respectful, no mudraking with other candidates and stuff. You just held your own till I could come to the place and enjoy Silverbells. I just love that because I can talk to, you know, the state police walking by. I can talk, see Michelle doing her thing with City Hood. Just a lot of different elements all going on at once, the marching band. Like, I'm a terrible marcher, so, you know, I respect all those different high schools marching down the street doing the music, but, yeah, I just, I love this city. I love being part of it, and I just feel like we're making a lot of headway, making a lot of positive moves. And consider Chief Ellery Sosby, though. I've seen Chief Hinkowski go through and Chief Green go through. They were both good friends of mine. What I see with Chief Ellery Sosby is that he is friendly, professional, and no surprises. He does, he just speaks professionally. He doesn't say a lot. But, you know, when I come to a City Council meeting, he just comes and shakes my hand. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you very much, and that was our final speaker.
All right. Seeing no further business before the Lansing City Council at 7:42, we are adjourned.